Please.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thanked for our many blessings. We're thanked for the opportunity of living in our our community and we're thanked for the citizens of our community. We pray that we'll make wise and wise decisions for them as we meet this council tonight. We say these things in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Consulate. All right, so today is the eleventh day of June, two thousand nineteen. And we have our regular Catston Town Council meeting. We are going to call this meeting to order. Do you have an agenda? Any need for additions? I do not see any.
I've got a question, under questions, I'll put it. I'd like an update on our Code of Arms, if we could.
Okay, all right, so we can put that here?
Sure.
Thank you.
Just, just an update.
So, all in favor? Thank you. All right, so we have two counselors.
I was going to, but that's what I thought somebody else did when you asked for the vote. Okay, I'll make it official.
All right.
I move to, to adopt the, the agenda.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so we have two counselors, Consulate Brown, Consulate Drew, that will join us a little bit later. All right, so we do not have a delegation at this point. We have adoptions of minutes that needs to be done. Consulate Silk?
I move the, to adopt the meeting minutes of May the twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
Questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, under six, a draft bylaw and policy, we're going to look at four different bylaws or policies and kind of see if we can do something better with them. So six A is a draft bylaw, fifteen eighty-two F is a utility bylaw amendment. We just need to approve the review of the amendment. So is there anything there that you feel you need to know more of from our administration? Or is it satisfactory?
I'll, I'll make a motion to first reading of bylaw fifteen eighty-two F. And it's the utility bylaw amendments.
Okay, so we have first reading by Consulate Bangley. Welcome, Consulate Drew.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do two readings tonight? They said only recommended for one, but we could do two, couldn't we?
We could do two, but let's not do more than that. So all in favor? Thank you very much. So we are discussing draft bylaw fifteen eighty-two F, the utility bylaw amendment. So if there's an appetite for a second reading, we could do that, but let's not go any further than that.
I just want a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So have we decided that the town is not liable for freezing lines and that we're not going to be paying?
It comes up pretty soon.
We.
That's probably worse. The policy is the next one listed.
I thought that would had to be, I thought it was part of this deal, the utility.
Jeff, do you want to explain that?
The bylaw amendment is, is just a couple of small amendments to include freezing lines frankly in the acts of God or things that the town is saying we can't control.
Yeah.
So that's all that's amended in the, the meat of this matter is in the policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so all what we need to do is approve this amendment and your question, Consulate Brown?
What are the next one?
Is for, under the policy.
Okay.
Yeah. This, so, welcome, Consulate Brown. So any other questions regarding that? If not, we could go to a vote. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so now let's go to six B, draft policy, PW one twenty-nine. Frozen water line policy and maybe Jeff, if you want to address the question of Consulate Brown's?
You bet.
If you would like to, it would help.
Let me make sure I'm ready to roll here. You bet. So after our last conversation, I took that feedback and tried to draft something that I think will work as a reasonable policy for frozen lines. Again, we hope this is something that happens as infrequent as we've seen it in the past. It hasn't been a common occurrence. And so what we were trying to do was, was twofold, was to, well, it's probably multiple things here, but mainly we wanted to delineate the responsibility of the private sector and the, and the town. So where we were going to draw the line as far as when you needed a plumber and when the town would come in and help. And then also try and clarify where the town would incur costs and where it won't. So if I heard counsel correctly the last time we talked, the discussion and what I took from it was, we weren't looking to reimburse plumbing bills, but when it was our turn to jump in and incur some costs to thaw, we were, we were going to do that. And whether that meant we would direct the plumber to finish the job and send us that portion, or we would mobilize and we would finish that portion. So that's how this is drafted, simply saying that that's how we would acknowledge it. When it got to the curb stop, it was then our responsibility and we're taking a bit more of a diplomatic approach to many communities who are saying, we don't know where these things start and stop. We don't know who causes them, so no, we're totally out. We are saying in this policy, yes, we're responsible for a portion of this. And we're willing to accept that, but we have discretion on how it's handled. So for example, there's a clause in there that says if you engage a plumber and you go ahead and incur a bunch of costs, but you, but they don't notify the town, we're not paying anything, for example. Because we simply, and I, I have an example on my desk right now where the plumber's saying, well, I hit this point and went out. And we're saying that's impossible. It's not that far out to the main. And so we have these debates about how far out they were anyway. And so if we can be engaged early in the process and we have a little more control to make sure that that's appropriate and accurate. So that's what I was attempting to lay out in this policy.
Essentially, in that case, it gives me the feeling that in a fall, when the freeze may come, and it's an important thing to communicate to the homeowners that the policy is such that we require them to contact the town ASAP.
And our discussion also was with this, if however this passes, well, and we need to talk about how it passes if it's a council or administrative policy, we'll talk about that too. We'll send this out to all the plumbers with business licenses with the town.
Right.
So they have it right away. I mean, obviously, we don't anticipate this issue for a few months, but if at all.
Yeah, well, we hope not. Consulate Bangley.
So Jeff, you're telling us that we're going to be responsible from the house to the curb stop?
From the curb stop to the main.
Okay.
Yes, that we would keep the responsibility of the house to the curb stop with the owner and that the town would assume responsibility from the curb stop to the main, yes.
We have some awful long lines.
We do, and that, there is some risk there, right? Again, we're, we're hoping that this isn't a regular occurrence. We haven't seen it in a long, long time. But we've delineated in the bylaw that that's where the responsibility separates.
Right, right.
You know, we've established that in other documents, that the town is responsible from this point. So that's how it was drafted, but it, it's certainly up for debate.
Consulate Brown.
So Jeff, where are we at with that three thousand dollar bill?
It wasn't that much when I requested receipts.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, it was a small portion of that. And so it's actually frankly, it's sitting on my desk. So I've told, I've had a couple of people who have asked me, I said, counsel and I are working on some policy and bylaw amendments when the dust settles on that, because we don't have anything currently that speaks to frozen lines.
We don't have a framework, yeah.
I said, when the dust settles on that, I'll meet with you again and we'll discuss how we're going to handle this.
Yeah, because my concern is, is that there's, they might want to have this grandfather and we have nothing that to rather grandfather it to.
Actually, frankly, the amendments lean to support the homeowner better than it used to, because the previous bylaw simply said, we're not responsible.
At all, yeah.
Period. So this is actually trying to move in the way of saying, we'll share some responsibility with the homeowner, but with some rules.
Right.
Because I can lean on the bylaws that sits now and says the town is not responsible for.
Yeah.
In other words, that bill can be paid only after we decide to have a policy in place. Because the, under the past policy, there is no need for us to entertain that bill.
Just a couple of things on there. Number three, the town will not credit water, utility or compensate owners for running water to prevent.
Right.
We discussed that briefly. Is there a reason, is it just too much of a complication to try and figure out what they'd used?
So I, I'm actually.
It would seem like it might be in our benefit if they ran the water so it didn't freeze up.
Yeah, so it's a good point of discussion. I took it, and I, and I could have misinterpreted or just forgotten. I took it that the council, when we talked, wasn't looking to compensate if we asked people to run. Partly because the cost of doing that was substantially less than calling a plumber. Was the, the theory.
Yeah.
And the only thing, the, the best method we've talked about there, Council Court, is that we would simply bill them what their previous month's consumption was.
Okay.
Because it's not reasonable to say, everybody go read your meter quick before you do this and send it into us. That would just be an absolute mess.
Yeah.
And you couldn't manage it and you'd get about ten percent response as all.
Yeah.
And honestly, running a finger of water is good, not going to incur a very, very large change in your bill.
Well, I love this, by the way. I like the way it's written. To speak on that, I would say that it's one of the, it's one of the things we do when we own a property, right? When we own a property, we mow the lawn, we replace the furnace when it needs. If I need to run my water so that I don't incur a huge debt with a plumber, I feel like that is a homeowner, that is my responsibility. I do not feel that that is a responsibility of the town. I just don't.
I agree.
But to follow up on my question, Jeff, because of the length of the, of some of our courage to the main.
Right.
That thing could be froze up how far back? How, how are we going to determine where it froze up? Once it's froze, then the whole.
Precisely. I, I agree with you completely, Counselor. Therein lies the mystery, yeah. And, and I don't know the answer to that, because if it freezes right outside the main, it'll take about two hours to be frozen to the house and vice versa.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, because every house has different materials, different elevations, whether they're under a driveway, whether they're under lawn, so many factors. I don't have a great formula for you there. I don't.
So if you look at this policy, like you said, it's all favorable to the owner.
Right.
If you think about it.
Can be.
But here is a little bit of a thinking. This year was an anomaly in the weather.
Yeah.
And we had nine houses and businesses, including two businesses that were affected. So we're not talking a large amount of property that are involved. And we also know that those who chose to have a plumber and on their own, there are, most of them chose to pay the bill themselves. So I really don't think that it's a big issue. It might be, in town, maybe two properties that would have answered to that issue where we could not really determine where the freeze happened.
Yeah, it's, it's tricky. And, and to that too, and where I thought you might have been going with that, I, I put in on section eleven, sometimes, you know, we may not be able to do the work. We, we had a few properties that called plumbers, they could not thaw them. It didn't happen.
Right.
And so what I put there is if we can hook you with an overlying connection, that, that might be all we can do at the time. And if you wish to get a plumber and pay him all kinds of money to get you out, that, that's on you. Like, we did what we could reasonably do at the time.
And you also say that we would make sure they have water for dishes and whatever, flushing toilets. That I think is the right thing.
Well, we, we had one property this winter that was without water for a while, but the neighbor had a cistern, and so we went out every day and filled the cistern. And then they were able to draw from, from that. So we do, and I didn't put exactly that we will bring you this many bottles of this, that, because I don't know. I don't know what that's going to look like.
Yeah. Any other questions, Counselor?
Just a minor thing here, it says that number four, in the event that residents experience frozen lines, et cetera, the resident is to call a plumber. Maybe that should be may or should call a plumber. We shouldn't be telling them they have to.
And the town, maybe.
We shouldn't be telling them they have to call a plumber. I mean, it's up to them if it's frozen up, it's.
I think, like you said.
Just, just the way it sounded.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you.
Maybe they should have, and the town.
Yeah.
And advise the town.
Yeah. I mean, if it's their property, we really can't say you have to call a plumber. I mean, you may live with a frozen line, I don't know. But just, just the way it was worded.
Okay, fair enough. I'll make a note here. Mayor, if I might, this is the first time we've run into an interesting governance piece on policy. Three years ago, council separated administrative policies and council policies, and this one is a unique one, because for, I'll use a snow removal policy as an example. The council today chose to keep that as a council policy. Because while it's purely administrative on what's the order you're going to plow streets, it was highly political.
You're right.
And so they felt at the time, maybe they were just trying to give me a little protection, I don't know. But they said, you know, we'll just keep that as ours, because we get a lot of feedback on that item. Now, this one isn't one I anticipate you'll get a lot of feedback on, by the way. And citizens can always appeal to council if they don't like something with an administrative policy. There's no question. You can take any policy back into your purview at any time. So I wrote it as an administrative policy, meaning that there's no motion required here. It's my signature that brings it into force.
Right.
Unless you felt strongly otherwise. But I think once it's in place, it really is, how are we reacting administratively to a certain situation? But I do want, I want your feedback in formulating it first. I think this is kind of a hybrid policy here, because it's in answer to some political inquiries you've had from citizens.
Personally, I think that the way the draft is written would satisfy the need of council, knowing that if a a customer or a, a town citizen happened to have this issue, we feel strongly that you have a good policy in place to direct them properly. As long as we maybe receive some feedback through your, through your write-up when, once a month or at that council, if you feel letting us know lines are freezing in town.
Of course, yeah.
It would be something that would be.
And I'd probably email you like I have, you know, hey, heads up.
Would be important for us to know, I think, so we have the heads up.
Well, Mayor, I think that stated in item seven, as each situation is unique, the attending town staff shall have discretion to make the appropriate decision on behalf of the town.
No, but, yes, so that is the stuff, but what we, I'm trying to say is if there are frozen lines, it would be important for administration to let us know, so we are aware of the situation and at least have some empathy for the people who have the problem.
Sure. So if that's okay, what I'll do is I'll amend, and I appreciate the feedback, and I'll tweak that section for Council Court. And then I'll place this in my CEO report next meeting as an approved policy.
I think it will be fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you need, do you need a motion to have that approved?
No, no, it's a policy.
Okay.
Okay, six C, draft bylaw sixteen eighty-three, FCSS bylaw. It's a review of the new bylaw proposal. If you look at it, there is a improvement on the government, governance model of FCSS and a proper description of the role of the board, of board members and of the director of FCSS services. And that came as a result of a few difficulty on approval of grants, programs. And there was maybe a little bit of lack of communication or misunderstanding as to what the role was on each other's part. So that is written to fix that problem. So Consulate Brown, I'm sure you reviewed that. How do you feel that review is written?
It's exactly what the board asked.
Okay. So I feel comfortable that that is really reflective of the separation of powers on that board and a proper guidance as to where each stand in term of responsibilities and accountability. I like the changes. So if you are willing to make a motion and we can discuss it further. Would you like to do that?
Absolutely.
First reading, yeah.
I make a motion for the first reading of bylaw sixteen eighty-three. Um, FCSS board by, board bylaw.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. We don't need to do any more. All right, let's go to six D. Draft bylaw sixteen forty-seven D, land use bylaw amendment. Now this one is an interesting review that requires some discussion. There is some language that I think needs to be fixed in that bylaw in view of the Appeal Board recommendations. I think there are some sections in there that might need a little bit of clarification. Jeff, could you maybe help us with that review from the Appeal Board and the section regarding those six, six stalls or six.
Oh, the visits?
Six visits, yeah. And there's a few other things that need to be kind of fixed.
So I think everyone has seen the Appeal Board found in favor of the appellant. So they upheld the appeal and they voided the development permit for the property in question. So, and that's all fine and well, and that's why the process is there. So they performed as it was, as, as it's set up. But it, it brought to bear a couple of interesting questions. If you, and I know there's a lot there, but you can go through kind of the rationale for why they, they upheld the appeal. And one of them has to do, and, and Mrs. Smith brought this up, and her letter actually puts this forward quite well. That there's a number of pieces within the bylaw that they feel that the discretion of the MPC may be overreached. And that they would like, and, and so the bylaw now, this, while the appeal is done, and that was in the jurisdiction of the appeal, you as a council, in my opinion, want to have some say in the amount of discretion your MPC can exercise. And you do that in the bylaw. So this is now on your table again. And part of it is, and, and I know there's a bunch of pages, on the twelfth page of this background document, and this was in our last one, there's Schedule Eight Home Occupations. So most of their decision-making centered around the home occupation section of the land use bylaw. And what we have is, we have home occupation one and we have home occupation two. And I'm a little bit, I don't say bothered, but I think the wording on home occupation two is a little ambiguous, first of all. I think it's poorly worded. So what, what home occupation one says is that you don't need a development permit if you're one of these things. If you fit these criteria, go ahead. The development officer can just tell you to go ahead. You don't need to go to MPC for a variance. It's fine. But then you have home occupation two, and the wording says that the MPC is to decide upon any of the home occupations listed below, as home occupation two, only if, and then A, there is no more than six business-related trips to the residence per day. And it mentions other things. So when I read that, I interpret to say, if there are more than six visits to, per day, the MPC does not have discretion over it. It is prohibited. That's how I read that. So the question is, you as counsel, where it's your bylaw, need to decide if that's what you want it to mean, because I think we should word it differently. I think it can say something like, they are to decide upon any of the home occupations, only, well, I was working through wording earlier, but it's almost a weird double negative.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only if there are no more.
There, there has to be, the statement has to be a positive statement in order to make, to bring clarity into the meaning. Because the Appeal Board definitely zeroed in on that very specific section and interpreted it exactly as you did. Which gives me the feeling that if that is the correct interpretation of this, the language one need to be changed. Secondly, what we need to understand as a council, especially for those who sit on that MPC, is what exactly is OSK role using our bylaw or telling us that we can vary from the bylaw? What is exactly their role and authority to do so, since the bylaw should direct us? That's what I'm questioning.
My concern, Jeff, is how much discretion do you take away from the MPC? And, and still let them be a viable
Yeah.
working committee? Or should it, should it turn back to MPC as a council?
Right. So there are a list of pros and cons to what you've proposed that would be reasonable for you to debate. I, I think with, I think what home occupations one and two do, and the general standards, is they give the MPC this, some discretion. I just think in this case, the first point was misinterpreted. That's my opinion.
Yes.
I think that, and, and actually, and I don't think there was any malicious intent anywhere along the way.
No, I, I really don't think so either.
I think they were trying to satisfy the neighborhood needs with the needs of the homeowner to, to do this. I, I think it was fine. But it's something that was keyed in on, and so it flags as something we should look at. One thing I put in my backgrounder was, and not because I want anyone on trial here, but I think it would be a great idea potentially for Ryan from ORSK and Nolan to come and we just talk about the interpretation of the bylaw and the discretion that Old Man River and the development officer feel there is within certain areas of the bylaw. Just so we're on the same page, if nothing else. We may not change a thing, but at least we're all on the same page, because I'll be honest, even for me, I'm not involved in the MPC. So some of this is ambiguous to me as well.
All right, so counsel, would you feel it helpful to have Nolan and to have Ryan from ORSK come and help us understand the rationale? Consulate Brown?
I, I would really like that, because, you know, if I remember, Council Court, you weren't at this meeting.
Pleasant.
And I was, and you were here and you were here to observe.
I was an observer.
There was information here that was brought up before the appeal that we never had at the table when we were making our decision. And, and, and it was kind of confusing to me, because with the information that we were given at the meeting, I felt we had no other decision that we could make other than to give it to them. And once I got this information, I mean, I felt kind of embarrassed, because I didn't have this information.
Counselor, don't feel embarrassed, because the reason I'm saying that, I appreciate their feeling and I recognize it. But I said, don't feel embarrassed. I'm going to tell you why. When you read that, that sentence, it is not clear
Yeah.
if OSK can influence
That's what I thought.
the changes reasonably
Yeah.
beyond and above what's written here in the bylaw.
Yeah.
So what we need to make sure is that if that is the safety net,
Yeah.
then MPC has to operate within the parameters
Yeah.
of that safety net.
You're absolutely right, because I felt that we didn't have enough information.
Right. And so the next.
On that, we, that's why we made our decision. But quite frankly, I'm, I'm pleased that this appeal brought forth this information. It helps me the next time. We'll be a little more careful, right?
It helps all of us understand the issue better.
So I, I, I think that we should have Ryan come and Nolan and work on it.
I think so too.
I, I'm with the mayor that we need to know what.
What the role is of ORSK?
What the role is of ORSK on our town bylaws
Mm-hmm.
for development.
But how.
Can they, can they intercede and, and go against our policy?
The actors guide, not as.
But in this situation, it's almost.
Generally speaking, when they come and talk to us, they, they make recommendations.
Exactly, they guide.
They tell us we have to do this or that.
They guide the, the, the conversation. But they can also influence, right? So if they're influenced, we need to be influenced within the.
But they give us this discretion. Ryan has always been. Ryan has always been very good that way, you know.
So, I totally understand that.
I mentioned this to the mayor. Keep in mind, you have a by law here that ninety-nine percent of the time has worked really well.
Oh, absolutely.
So, we found a glitch. We found something that was ambiguous. So, I don't want us to sound like we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater here, right? Not at all. You have a very thorough and good land use planning by law. But we found an area of ambiguity that happened to cause a bit of a problem within a neighborhood. And so, you have a chance to rectify it a bit.
But good for them that they come up with it, and it's helpful for us.
And I'm really glad, when citizens come and do that, yes, it was on both parts. But you know what? There's something good that will come out of it.
But isn't that what the appeal process is all about? There was, they came, they discussed it, and they didn't like the outcome. And so, they had the option of appealing. So, it went to the appeal, and sure enough, out on the Appeal Board, there was nobody from the town of Cardston. We had people from the county, but there was nobody from within. None of us sat on that, and they came up with their, I think that's the part of the process that's the best.
Yeah.
I really think that one of those parts where it said the six business trips a day or something, and I immediately thought of piano teachers. The issue, I think, for them wasn't the number of visits, this amount of traffic that was coming with that visit. So, we want to be, I guess, maybe a little bit careful looking at that. Because if a piano teacher has seven students in a day, all of a sudden, she's, she's not obeying the by law.
I think, I think the idea is the number of trips, but also how many in the car go, right?
Also, whether council decides to take back M P C or not. I missed that meeting. It was the first meeting we had in six months. So, it's not like we meet very often.
No, that's right.
So, if council was decided to, was to decide to take that back, it wouldn't cause a whole lot more time in council.
It wouldn't be on us, no.
We'll discuss that point in a minute.
Yeah.
Jeff, how much discretion does our development officer have? Or does he have to go right by the book?
So, he has discretion, like if you look at Home Occupation, for example, there's a list under Home Occupation One saying if they meet these criteria, then good to go. We can just tell them to go ahead with it, right? So, there is some criteria. And then if I recall, and I'm sorry, Counselor, I don't have it in front of me, but on some of the setback things, which are our most common variants,
Yeah.
he has, I think, ten percent discretion, if I'm not mistaken. So, if something is a few percent one way or another of the mandated setback, he can exercise some there. But I'd have to double check that. But I believe there is a tiny bit of discretion there. But that's about it.
Yeah.
Other than that, it's letter of the law.
Yeah. For example, on Thursday, we're meeting, dealing with the setback, basically, with the guy wanting to put a ramp in office.
Yeah.
It's a very simple, minor thing.
I saw that.
Probably go through it in two seconds, but
All right. So, that is the issue. The other issue that we need to discuss is that very point that you were mentioning, Counselor Court. Does council wishes to become the M P C? I'll give you my opinion. And does that help council to do things better? Personally, I do not feel that it is very good for the council to be the M P C. I really think the system we have now is appropriate. We have a glitch, we fix it. The reason why I say I don't feel it's a good idea is because imagine in that scenario that we went through, we make that decision to not, to allow all that studio to operate. Then, the person goes and appeal, and the decision is upheld. What does that leave us? Having made a bad decision? What does it look in the public eye? I rather it to be a separate body from this council.
M P C does cushion council, no doubt.
Absolutely.
I actually like the way that this turned out.
Yes.
That a decision was made, there was an appeal, they came to council. I mean, it just seemed to flow fairly well, and we weren't actually stuck in the middle of that.
Yeah, exactly. Counselor Bound?
I prefer to leave it as it is. I, I'm, I'm in agreement with Jeff. This is a little glitch. I mean, I've been on, I've been on the M P C for a couple of years now, and we've never had anything. It's all been very straightforward. It's never been an issue. We've never had a question. We've never had an argument about it, or anybody say, hey, you know, this is unfair. But this was just a glitch, and we'll get it, we'll get it corrected.
Counselor Selk?
The original by law was drafted in nineteen ninety-five. I think it served us pretty well.
I think they should speak for itself. Thank you. And the glitch is fixed.
Absolutely right.
Is going to be fixed. Jeff?
I just want some direction on timing. So, we've talked in the land use by law about all the legislative changes, which frankly, go without saying, need to be changed. They're required. We talked about corner sightlines, which we established at forty feet. We need to have a little further discussion on the home occupation piece, excuse me. But we also need to schedule a public hearing whenever you redo a land use by law. It's required. So, the question is, are we close enough, with maybe one exception or not, that you want to do first reading, schedule a public hearing for July? You can still amend, obviously, between readings. Or do we want to wait until we hear from O R S C, and then we do a first reading, and then we have a public hearing, maybe in September? There's no panic on this. We have until the end of the year for the legislative changes, so we're fine. I just want some feeling of timing for council.
I feel like I'd like to have Ryan and Nolan involved, and I don't think we have enough time to get them here for July. I think the fall is, if we don't have any time constraint that's pushing us, then I think that let's just go with that. That's my personal opinion.
Council?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So, what I'll do is, we'll talk about timing again after we meet with Ryan and Nolan.
Yeah.
And then we'll talk about the timing of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Six E is a very interesting request. Cemetery by law variance. It appears to me that if you, if you are a veteran and you have a official memorial from the Veterans Affairs, thirty-two inches is what you need, thirty inches what we have. If we take the restriction of height away for any kind of veteran memorial, then that solves that issue.
I'm a little confused by this because there's already probably ten of them out there. So, I don't know what, where this came from. Yeah. Correct. Correct observation. Those are all in a legion designated area?
No.
From what I understand, that's what Terra told me.
Some of them have passed away, and they were allowed to put, if they were veteran of World War II, and they're, they're on grid, they can be on their own spot. They don't have to be in the legion designated area.
Yeah, I was explaining that it was, in the legion, there was all those, and then this person wanted to be buried not in that area, but with their family sites.
I believe that, I know in the other cemeteries I looked at, they're just mixed in with everybody else.
Sure, sure.
Counselor Court, the easy way to do it, you remove the restriction and you put
Yeah.
all veteran memorial will be accepted.
Agreed.
Counselor Selk?
I'd like to make a motion that council approve a variance to by law sixteen thirty-four for the veteran standard upright marker.
Thank you. All in favor?
And there was a second one below that too, Counselor?
Right.
I'll make the second motion to direct administration to draft an amendment to the cemetery by law to allow for veterans' standard upright markers to be allowed in the Cardston Cemetery.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. So, that's an easy fix. All right, let's go on to seven. July C C W meeting. So, Jeff went back with shame, looking at the different clips that they found on that issue. And really, what it was, is the decision of council was to bring it back to this council to make the decision now. So, we discussed it back and forth, but we didn't come to a decision, so the decision is now. So, we have different dates. Jeff, can you give me those July date, if you don't mind? There was, well, I probably have a calendar here.
So, so in the org meeting, you passed a motion as it was written, and then you had a pretty good debate about whether you wanted to have it or not. And the discussion was, let's talk about it in June. So, here we are.
Here we are.
So, it, we, you have canceled July second and July twenty-third. So, we, we have historically had one meeting in July and August. So, you've canceled the C C W and the second meeting of the month for July and August respectively. So, the discussion was, we don't know what the agendas are going to look like. We might need to meet, depending on what the issues of the day are, those kinds of things. So, I don't, right now, and I don't know what'll come up. You, I do not have a robust agenda planned for those meetings right now. In fact, your next meeting is looking really light right now as well. We're starting to get into that
Yeah.
that summer season when things are a little bit quieter. So, but if there are items that you want to discuss, by all means, I'm, I'm game. So, we just need to decide.
All right. Counselors, I always believe, let's not have meetings for the sake of meetings. Let us be productive in what we do and on extend our time beyond what we need to do in the summertime. The agenda, I've been on council seven years, and honestly, I think it was one year where we probably could have used a second meeting in July. There was fairly large agenda. But otherwise, it has proven to be a reasonable way to schedule a meeting in the summertime. So, your call. I can just give you my experience in the past seven years.
You're talking one meeting each month, or no meetings at all?
Yeah, one each, yeah.
One meeting, no.
Yeah, your second week, your first council meeting each month is still scheduled.
That's the second week.
Correct. Yes, the second Tuesday is still scheduled.
It's scheduled still.
Yes, you only canceled the C C W in the fourth week.
And you know, you need to remember, that is a time where all the staff is starting to rotate on holiday. So, staffing is thin.
I think the reason this came up, Mayor, at the time was that it seems to me that last summer, it was fairly, there was a lot of stuff on the go. This summer, maybe not so much, so
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. So, let's put it this way. Imagine that we schedule two meetings. We can cancel one meeting within how many hours of that meeting? Twenty-four hours?
Well, you've canceled your C C W and second meeting and the org meeting. Those are, those are done. But you can call one with twenty-four hours notice.
Okay. So, what about if we kept those two? And if Jeff was telling us, look, there's really a lot of things that need to be covered unless we're going to have a full meeting, then let's call another meeting.
Let's just go with one meeting.
But let's start to tentatively, tentatively decide when that would be.
Either, I would say you would have it, say, on your fourth Tuesday.
Right.
So, July ninth and the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Right?
But right now, your twenty-third's canceled, so
So, it would be July ninth and twenty-third if we needed the twenty-third. And in August, in August would be
What was it, the sixth?
Would be six and
Thirteenth? Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
August.
Hold on. No. We, we have the sixth, and we canceled the twentieth, so would be the twentieth that would come back.
Date doesn't sit right with me.
It's what it says, that the regular council meeting scheduled for August twentieth will be canceled, yes.
Just for clarification.
Are we suggesting we just leave it alone, and then we can call a special meeting of council if we need to?
Yeah. Counselor Selk, what we're trying to do is to tentatively have a date, so that if people are going on holiday, they have an idea. So, it would be the twentieth of August, so
Twenty-seventh, Mayor.
Yeah, I think that might be an error in that date, but your normal meeting would be the twenty-seventh. That's the fourth Tuesday.
I won't be here on the twentieth.
Yeah, so there is an error in this thing.
Counselor Court's cruising.
So, our meetings are July ninth, August sixth, tentative July twenty-third, tentative August twenty-seventh.
Right. So, we are meeting on August sixth, is that correct?
Yes.
We are meeting July ninth, August sixth.
Right, good.
Is that clear enough?
Is August sixth is Heritage Week, right?
Yeah, I hope you are there.
I'm actually going to disagree with you, Mayor. You're not meeting the sixth, you're meeting the next week.
The thirteenth.
Sixth would be your C C W.
Yeah, it's the thirteenth, that would be, that's the council meeting, yeah.
You're right.
That's what I thought.
So, this is why you told me the twenty-seventh, that makes sense now.
Yeah, so
Okay, I couldn't see your fault in this lady was that.
Yeah.
Okay, it makes sense. So, July ninth, August thirteenth.
Correct.
Yeah, we got it right now.
Yeah.
And I'll keep you posted as we get to the second meeting in June, in two weeks. Let you know what it looks like.
Okay. So, that's fair enough. Does it work for you, counsel?
Are we not meeting on the twenty-seventh of August? I won't be here on the ninth, I'll be in Kalispel, but that's fine.
We're saying possibly.
Possibly the twenty-seventh as well?
Of August, if needed.
Tentative.
Okay, so the ninth
Okay. Tentative.
Of August.
All right, parade, you guys. There are two parades that normally we try to attend. Cardston would be nice if you were there. And Lethbridge, possibly. We used to take the trolley.
I think we're still okay there.
We okay? All right. There are changes coming to, to the Remington and the policies that have regarding carriage. So, this year is probably the last year we can have carriage as well. So, you pick, go ahead, and administration is going to fill, fill in those
Sterling's the one that I would attend.
Okay, does somebody else want Sterling this year? Nobody else? Okay, so Counselor Bound, you got it. Raymond?
Hold on one second, Mayor.
Can we just confirm Sterling, carriage or car?
Use your head with those new magnetic stickers.
Got a neat magnetic sign for you now, but it doesn't, it's good either way.
Signs, right?
It's good either way.
Yeah.
You can throw candy if you're in the car, so that's honestly your trade off.
Candy, if I am in the carriage, I don't throw candy.
No.
And there's tons of candy thrown, I would prefer the carriage personally, but
Well, enjoy it this year, because next year it won't happen.
May, may not, may not.
May not, okay.
We'll do the carriage then, do the last time, might as well enjoy it.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You can't throw candy from the carriage.
No.
You cannot.
Because of horses.
We, but we can throw it from the trolley, right?
So, last year, we had Doc Jones pull the trolley, so we weren't using a Remington team. So, you could.
Yeah.
Which we will arrange for Cardston again this year.
Yeah. Was Dave actually
And we had, we had to actually put you at the back because we couldn't have Remington teams behind you.
Yeah.
So, anyway, you would normally be at the front. We moved some protocol around so you could throw candy.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's go Sterling. We have McGrath in general.
I'd like to go to McGrath, you say, or put
Okay, Counselor. Counselor Bangle would like McGrath, does that
And so does Counselor Selk.
What?
You like McGrath too, because you have grandkids there.
Well, if you take a carriage, you could
But I don't like to throw candy, because I
If you have a carriage, you could be four in a carriage.
Have kids, grandkids there too, but yeah.
Okay, you guys fight it over. I won't do that for you.
Obviously, all men. So, it is July, so it is July twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Correct.
Going to take your car, Counselor Bangle?
I could use my truck here.
Yeah, maybe
Well, you can take the town vehicle too, right?
We also, we also have
It's a brand new car.
We also have C S L Ford, who likes to donate, like they did last year, and have their advertising out, and I'm all for that.
Are you going to Raymond Tim?
I'd like to use my truck with the new magnetic signs.
Four grandkids. So, you're going to take the Raymond Parade?
I just do not, so I can be with my twelve grandkids.
Oh.
Let's settle McGrath here first, yeah.
So, July twenty-seventh?
All right, so who is going to McGrath?
Bangle and Brown.
Bangle and Brown.
Selk.
And so.
Bangery, Brown.
Carriage or car?
Well, if we have three of us.
You have two right now.
Could we get a carriage? Well, if we have three.
I'm not going.
What about?
No, I'm fine.
No, I'm not going.
He said he wasn't.
We could, we could use a carriage then, have an.
Guys, we need to fill the other spots. And I'm.
You don't, you don't have to go to any of them, but.
Okay.
So, do we want, do we want a vehicle or do we want, should we do horses?
Because it's a candy parade, isn't it?
No candy.
Oh, it's candy, yeah.
Yeah, so you.
Not do horses.
No?
No.
It's cool.
Pretty hard to throw candy from a horse.
Watch me.
You cannot. You can't, you cannot. If you are in a Remington carriage, you cannot send candy overboard.
Okay, so we'll take a truck or something.
Vehicle, okay.
Yep.
Raymond.
Raymond, who is going to Raymond?
I'll take that one.
Good councillor, thank you.
And I'm assuming you're taking the car?
I'm taking the car.
Got it.
Roll the windows up because I have that water being going, but.
Glenwood? Also on July 27th, the same as McGrath? Excuse me?
Well, Glenwood, we used to have councillor Creed go there with a wheelbarrow.
We didn't have anyone go to it before, so.
No, no, never was a regular.
Yeah.
Okay, carry on.
Okay.
What else?
Uh, Pincher Creek, August 17th.
I've always gone to Pincher Creek.
But.
But I don't think that we need to have a carriage. Again, I could use my truck if.
Can't throw candy at that one regardless of what you have.
Pincher Creek, are you, which is the other one? After Pincher Creek, there's a Kanai?
You've got Kanai and Fort McLeod still and, well, Lethbridge is usually everybody.
Fort McLeod is a night, is.
Fort McLeod's in November.
November.
Yeah.
I don't mind, I like going to the Fort McLeod Parade.
All in favor?
Hey, guys, let's, who's going? Let's stay on task.
Okay.
I'm going to Fort McLeod.
So, we're still at Pincher Creek?
Yeah.
Richard, did you say you were going?
Okay.
I can go to Pincher Creek.
Great.
And I'll, and I'll use my truck.
Vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay. Kanai?
When is that?
We don't have a confirmed on it yet, but we believe it to be July 20th.
Can I make a comment on that? Mayor couldn't go last year, and so I went. And Jason, we.
You rode golf carts, didn't you?
We took, we took his golf cart because he's got it all fixed up. And that was a schmash, it was a, it was a nightmare. I mean, the whole parade was just, I don't know. It got started late, there was.
Okay, we don't have to go.
Yeah.
But we should.
Why?
I think so too. We're trying to establish.
You know what, put me on the, on this one and hopefully I won't have to send you.
I'll go with you.
Councillor Brown. Last time, I couldn't do it.
Yeah, right.
I went, I went a few years before and we sent candy, we threw candy with my husband.
20th.
Uh, 20th.
Okay, we have them.
It's a Saturday. Saturday?
We have them all covered.
Uh, so, Lethbridge, August 20th. By the way, Lethbridge isn't confirmed yet, but the date, but we think it's August 20th, which.
See, last year councillor Brown and Bangery and myself went to that one.
Okay.
I'll be glad to go to that one.
What's the feeling on Lethbridge?
I'll be on a cruise ship.
Yeah.
For me?
I'll be on a cruise ship somewhere, so.
Jeff?
We're just going everywhere.
That weekend.
We need to confirm Lethbridge because one year we were excluded because we didn't get a confirmation in that we are coming.
Okay.
I can't.
Okay.
I work that way.
No, it's okay.
You don't throw candy.
Because this isn't a candy one anyway, so we can send a carriage.
And honestly, you come at the end of the line and you have to catch your boss back.
We'll go do it.
Yeah.
What about you, councillor Selk, the Lethbridge Parade?
I will be in education week.
Okay.
Do you wear a mayor?
I put councillor Brown and Bangery. It's councillor Barnes and Bangery.
I would be.
So.
Barnes, Bangery and the mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, the three of us will go then.
Uh, Raymond, Sterling, McGrath, Cardston. Okay, I think we've got them.
Sure, if you want to.
Okay, I think we got them.
The Kanai, I'll take my car and slap those things on it.
Yeah, again, you can, any of you taking cars can come grab the town car, we'll just book it.
And we could get the town car, it's a brand new car. Okay, so that's.
And councillor Drew didn't get a chance to have a look at those new magnetic signs.
Oh, yeah.
Councillor Drew, are you going on any parade?
Just this one.
Kirsten.
Just here in town, yeah.
Yeah, you're happy with that? Satisfied with that?
I'm working, yeah, most of the time through the summer, so.
Does that work?
Kirsten days is.
Okay. The Rotary Golf Coles, under 7C. There's a Rotary Golf Tournament, considered donation, we always done that in the past.
Are they asking for a specific amount or have we just given?
In general, we kind of contribute.
We do.
We put a team of four in.
About $400, $420.
$550, oh, is it $550?
So, can I see a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we do a gold sponsorship, support the Rotary Golf Tournament. Thank you, Mayor.
You, you're going to go, Rich?
Uh, well.
Councillors want to golf in it, honestly?
You know, honestly, if the town can put a team of four with staff and councillors, if some of you are interested, by all means, are in favor?
Can't even go.
Okay, so if one of you is in, if somebody is interested to go golfing, let administration know and you can be part of the team representing council. Councillor Selk, would you like to go?
Yeah, I think I'll take a swing at this.
Okay, all right, so.
That's next week.
Okay.
Next Friday.
We voted.
Okay.
All right.
Maybe I'll be in the gallery.
So. Are we, did we vote on this one? I think so, yeah, we did.
It's normal, just, if I might, Mayor, it's a scramble tournament usually, just for fun, so councillor Brown, if it's something you want to try, you should go. Be happy to have a couple of councillors there.
Come on.
Okay.
Do it.
I'm just going for the shirt, I'm going to be honest. I just want a cool golf shirt.
They give you a shirt.
No, but I'll go shopping for one.
7D? Now, this, this asking is an interesting one. The Kanai Basketball Association. In the past, we have had a different request from different organizations, from the Kanai blood tribe. And we have always participated in different type of thing. This year, they're participating a lot more financially to our power. And I'm thinking, it wouldn't be wrong for us to support that association, maybe at a $301 level. But not through the donation policy, but through the general fund. There is an account there. So, yeah, discretionary. So, it's, it's up to you, council. You, you can decide. We did it for the housing, the Kanai housing, we did it for about two or three different type of things. We support them with different type of things. Yes, go ahead.
When this gets out, I'm guessing that the people in town are going to be requesting basketball donations as well for their spring leagues and everything else.
Correct.
So, we just need to be prepared that if we're going to go with Kanai, we're going to be hearing from people in town as well.
The select basketball?
That is absolutely true. And the same way as we have helped the hockey, the golf, you know, I mean, we, we do support and give donation in kind or in, in money to different groups.
We just won't have any reason.
That doesn't fit.
Not give it to, but if we're giving it to somebody outside of our community, if somebody within the community is running the same kind of program, we're obligated to donate to that as well.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely hear you. This is why there is some amount that are discretionary, some amount that need to come to council and you make the decision, right?
So, if we go with that bronze level, the 301.
Yeah.
Our name is on there, all the materials, and we're getting some recognition.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that we're trying to establish a better relationship. And I think that maybe we go with that level.
Okay, so, give me a sense, are you able to support that, yes or no?
Yeah.
Yes? Councillor Selk?
I'm not, yeah, move, ask the other councillors, I'm not sure.
Okay. Councillor?
I, I don't love it. And I don't love it because we're spending the Kirsten taxpayers' money. And I feel like if I, me as a taxpayer, which I am, if I'm hearing that my money is being spent in other communities and it's not, we've turned down other people that have come asking for money, that just feels wrong to me. I love the idea, I love the group, nothing against it, but you know what I'm saying? I just feel like.
You don't have to do it.
Turned down, that's what I was.
You, you don't have to do it.
I understand, I'm just giving you my reasoning.
This is why I say it does not fit the donation policy.
It doesn't.
Right? So, this is why it's a debate. So, councillor Kort, what's your feeling?
As I mentioned before, if, if we move ahead with this, we need to be prepared to make sure we're making donations within our own community.
Agreed.
If we're prepared to do.
That we would do.
Prepared to spend the extra money for our own community, then I'm, I have no problem with it.
But that we do under the policy, right?
I kind of echoed councillor Brown as well. We've, this kind of donation should more or less stay within our own community. But then, having said that, they're almost like they're part of our community, so.
Well, that's.
A lot of ways.
That's an interesting comment. Councillor Bangery, give me a sense where we're going with this.
I'm not with it.
No, okay. Councillor Selk?
I, yeah, I don't think I'm in line with this.
Okay.
Mayor, is it, Jeff, is this the same program that Jerry, what's his name, used to, he used to run? What was his name? The fellow that taught out at St. Mary's School for years and years, Jerry.
Okay, you know something? I really don't feel there is really an appetite for it. So, if there is no appetite, let's leave it alone.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so. 7E, Economic Development. Councillor Selk, you're going to be long-winded.
Never.
You got your letter, right, Dean?
In the essence of time.
It did, it's a time.
Poor guy.
You have four items under your name.
So, I need to do this with a gun to my head, is what you're telling me.
No, please, take your time because all those items are worth taking time.
And, and correct your grammar errors.
It's already done.
Don't tell him that.
Okay. As council knows, we, I had an opportunity to meet with the Assistant Deputy Minister of Economic Development last week. And, yeah, last week. And we had a very favorable meeting. She was very supportive and she actually brought along one of her new colleagues that's with the tourism part. Because tourism now falls under economic development trade. And she gave us, gave me some things to work on. One of them was to draft a letter, which is in front of you, and that will be item four. And they also talked a little bit about repurposing the tourist information center and how we could tap into some funds. Jeff, were you able to talk about that website that they sent to us, by any chance?
It'd be, maybe two seconds.
Okay. They sent us a link to a website where we could possibly tap into some federal government funds to repurpose or to reconfigure the tourist information center to a prehistoric museum. And we might want to pursue that and as far as making an application for it. The federal government has earmarked $11 million for, to the Western Economic Diversification Department for rural tourism in Canada. And so, that money is earmarked for Western Canada. So, apparently, the money is first in, first out. And we might want to jump on this and get an application into, I guess I'm, I'm looking for some feedback from council. We want to pursue that, is that something we want to do?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Well.
Councillor Selk, when you talk about repurposing the tourist information center, would that go along with that delegation that we had here?
With that whole idea?
Along that idea?
Well, I'm fairly certain the federal government has no appetite to give us $3 million, but they may give us a few hundred thousand dollars if we were to stay within the confines of the current footprint and not be making an addition onto it. So, I think that's where we start, we start small. Because they, their budget's 11 million, and if we're asking for 3 million, I think we're shooting at the stars.
Working a foreign tree.
So.
All right, so essentially, what you're looking for, councillor, is support from council towards the initiative moving forward, applying for funding? Is that what it is?
Right, now, that's also, Jeff, you're going to have to let us know the capacity of your staff to be able to go through that application process because I think they're all pretty tapped out.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to get this to come up so I can log into it and show you the, the stuff here. Oh, there we go, well, maybe.
There we were.
Yeah, there we were, very briefly. Shem, I just need that IP address. When it comes out in five years.
Oh, I guess while we're, while we're at this, I'll just say that. As part of a conversation that Jeff and I had with, what's Tony's last name?
Walker, no, yeah, Walker.
Yeah, Tony?
Yeah, going with Walker.
Okay, from Community Futures. He's funded by Western Economic Diversification.
Yeah.
And there's also money set aside for what we were hoping to get through the CARES grant was money to look into the feasibility and also economic impact of our trade. We sort of had a preliminary conversation and I guess we need to decide how to approach Tony to nail down what we want and what our ask is. So, Jeff, do you want to?
So, on that, the corridor funding.
Yeah.
Uh, when councillor Selk and I talked, I think the best way to, we have no idea what this kind of study is going to cost.
That's right.
We can't even guess within 20 grand, I don't know. So, we thought is if we put together an RFP and put it out there for, for firms that would be interested in quoting us on it, at least then we know the number. And I don't know if Tony wants his number out there, but he had a substantial chunk of cash that he thought we could get to put towards it if we asked appropriately.
Can I maybe ask a question? With Highway 3, they had the university, can they do the study? And I'm wondering if there is a team at the university that did that study? Because they have all the framework of a study for corridor, a trade corridor, to see if maybe.
Yeah, I don't know.
There would be something. Can, can we maybe try to research that or there is, anyway, maybe I'll try to put you.[1651.62]
I think that was mostly traffic volumes, wasn't it?
No, it was impact on the community too.
Okay.
So Alberta South Grow would know the person to contact on that Alberta Highway Three, I don't remember the name of that councillor, but maybe there, it would be worth trying.
Okay.
I got two questions. Councillor Barnes, where is Southwest on this corridor?
Well, they, I think they sent us a letter of support back some time ago. They're, they're on board with it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And the second question, how well-used is our tourist information center now? What's the traffic like?
Uh, I think last year it was around, don't quote me exactly, it was just over four thousand visitors, if I recall, between September, or May and September long.
Okay.
It's actually holding, kind of, that's where it's been for quite a while. It's bucking a bit of a trend to not, of not declining, as most information centers are.
Pretty positive, yeah.
So it seems to be holding its own. I actually visited with Jerem about two weeks ago, we were talking about that, and he feels that it's holding its own, okay. Now, they did a number of things last year, like they went out to public events and they kind of had some, they took a bit of a dog and pony show around the community as well for tourist information and drove some traffic. But it seems to be holding its own.
The reason why I ask that is I, I stopped in at the West Glacier Information Center, and they really promote this area up here. It's quite a thing to, to go into that big center and have a look at that.
One of the individuals that was at this meeting is the director of the trade, of the information centers for the province, and so when I mentioned this concept, he got really quite excited about it, thinking that it's not like we're going to shut down the tourist information part of it, we're just going to add to the reason that it's there. So.
Yeah. So if we were to get, say, three hundred thousand dollars, what will we be using that money for, councillor Southall? What would be specific items that we would use that for?
Building displays within the tourist information center.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, because once you get those artifacts, you have to make sure that they're secured and they're in certain kinds of display cases and things like that. And then a part of it would go to what we have seen in the past. Maybe we're looking at silhouettes on the hill south of Cartstone, and we're looking at something stuck out on Main Street in front of the tourist information center to attract people in, those sorts of things, so that we start getting a flavor for this. And really what we're wanting people to do is to put the brakes on and pull over rather than just whistling right through town.
Exactly.
So another question, so then, we're working in conjunction with the Tholeman and Tolly Group on this?
Um, we're doing this with Shane's blessing.
Okay, okay. Because I know they wanted three or four million dollars to do a big thing, but we just had no way to do that.
Well, we already said we didn't have the three million, so that's why we're trying to find some other source of funding to start to give it a beginning of a flavor of what is possibly to come.
Starting to do some things.
All right?
So, if you don't mind, Mayor, so the feeling of council is yes, we should.
Yes, absolutely.
Jeff will put out a request for proposal for.
The two items.
Trade corridor, and then Jeff, what are we going to do with the other element here?
So that's what I was just bringing up here, that's this, when that, when that finally got working, so this Canada Experience Fund.
Yeah.
Um, this is not to sound like I'm trying to delegate the responsibility of the grant, but I mentioned this to you, councillor Southall, if we could get Grant Tolly on it.
Yeah.
You know, he's an expert grant writer.
Right.
I just haven't had any correspondence with him on it yet.
Right.
Um.
Then, I guess what, we're skirting the issue, but if we get Grant Tolly to write the proposal for this, there's a cost involved.
Right, right.
So, you know, what we would, what we would need is a resolution from council to approach Grant to see if he's got an interest in this.
Right.
And what's the cost?
Do you have some money in your dev, uh, budget?
Are we paying Mormon trellis here? Not to answer your question with a question, Mayor, but, um, depending on Grant, what he, I mean, is there, is there probably fifteen hundred bucks there or something? Sure, and we also have council-approved operating, if that was considered a priority as well.
So there is money somewhere, it's not as if we were moving towards a project with no funding. There is funding.
Okay.
Okay? There.
Yeah, the, the criteria on this one is the rural and remote communities invest in projects such as destination development. So I think it, it's a fit, and then we are, and when I looked at this, we are an applicant that can apply, it's considerable money, so up to five hundred thousand dollars, and it can be a hundred percent, it's not matching.
Wow. This is exactly the right source of funding, if we can get it. Councillor, you've done a good job at your homework, thank you.
So is council okay with, actually, let's, uh, let's do this with a resolution, if you would. Do you want to direct us to engage Grant Tolly on getting a quote to write the grant?
Go ahead.
And then I can bring back an RFP with that amount for council-approved operating?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approach Grant Tolly with a request for proposal for writing this grant to the EF.
Yeah.
You can flower that up however you want, Shem.
Yeah.
Do you want the trade corridors?
Well, let's do that separate.
You're going to do it here and down?
Yeah, let's do it, let's do it separately.
All right.
I have another question then.
Okay, go ahead.
Before we vote. So this money, you know, depending on what we got, is that going to piggyback what we're going for as well?
No.
No.
It, it, okay, this is a whole separate issue, then, the trade corridor is different.
So this would be the trade corridor?
No.
No, this is tourism.
This is the Canadian Experience Fund, where we're trying to do something with the tourist information center to, you know, and if we can get up to a half a million dollars to repurpose some of it, that would be the ideal.
Okay.
Then we have another grant that we're going to apply for, to do a feasibility study on the trade corridor.
Okay.
For.
Is that clear?
So on that one, does council want to make a resolution to direct administration to do the request for proposal?
Yes.
And engage the grantor in this case for the trade corridor?
Okay.
And then we'll get going on that?
Yeah.
Already did it.
Make that motion, what Jeff said.
Now, I try a little harder.
Going on right now.
Okay, so you're making a motion?
Okay, well, have we even voted on the first one?
Voted on the first one.
Okay, so, okay, all right, let's, any other question regarding that? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, so, go ahead with your second motion regarding the trade corridor.
Second motion, we direct administration to make application to Western Economic Diversification for funds to do a grant, or to, funds to study the trade corridor, the economic impact and feasibility.
Okay.
Right.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right. Councillor, under seven E two, fiber opting installation, I think you want to talk about the Alberta Southwest opportunity now, what do you have in mind?
I just wanted an update from it.
Oh, you wanted an update?
So with fiber, the plot thickens, council. Telus bought AXIA Rural from Bell.
Right. What a surprise.
Yeah, so we were working with AXIA, Bell bought AXIA, lock, stock and barrel, they split off the rural internet fiber provisioned part of it and have sold that to Telus, but they maintain the supernet portion, because that was Bell's goal in the first place, right, was to get the supernet piece, right? So Telus now owns the rural fiber piece of AXIA. So while I was trying to make headway into who had the drawings and the plans and who owned them for Cartstone, now I have, I'm right back to exact square one, because they have a new owner and they don't know what they're doing with it yet either.
Okay, so which will be.
So a couple of things, though, is the county has, what was the name of the company now, I just forgot, Light, Light Access? That's the company that's doing a fiber installation for the county between Mountain View and Levitt. So it's coming off the supernet in Mountain View and going to Levitt, and they're going to take it to Towers and then try and broadcast internet there. That company wants to also have redundant connection from our supernet hub here and would like to work with us eventually to go back that way now. So they have a redundant connection point.
Right.
So they are just getting this done, and then they want to come talk about this, and they've done a preliminary design on a fiber trunk on the perimeter of the town already, and that's been done, and so that kind of backbone work has been designed. One more thing with that is South Grow has contracted with Taylor Warwick, a gentleman named, named Craig Dobson, who, Peter is trying to get us together, Craig and I, because they're doing some work apparently for South Grow on fiber readiness in the South Grow community, something along that line. So Craig and I have been introduced electronically over email, but we have not met in person yet. I believe he's out of Winnipeg or Saskatoon, he's somewhere over there. So there's a bunch of things in the air with fiber, and then the AXIA sale just kind of complicated it a bit, because I'd been spending a lot of time trying to track down who owned the plans for the design of Cartstone.
Okay.
So, now I don't know.
Councillor Bangle?
Jeff, what's in it for us if they come off our tower?
Well, the county piece, well, again, they're, actually, they can do it without us having anything to do with it at all, because they would be back, they'd just be using the supernet as this, as the redundant hub for fiber, for the data. So really, they can do it without us having any idea it's even going on. But when they looked at bringing that in, they, they did a bit of a more thorough design and said, well, what would it look like if we put a bit of a framework all through the town, main corridors? Could it start to branch off of that? And that design's done, they have that already. So I've kind of been just keeping them, we've been talking on, it, it's been pretty sparse lately, but we keep in touch a little bit, just as they've been progressing with their project, so we're not left out in the cold on that one. But there's just a lot of strange stuff going on in this area right now, and I'm hoping to hear this, this Craig Dobson and Taylor Warwick are supposed to be kind of regional guru's institutions, as Peter called them, I just pulled up his email. And so I'm hoping I can have some good discussion with them and get a, get a bit of a feel for where they see the industry right now, especially with Telus in the mix.
Good.
And Telus is interesting because they have a massive fiber line in town.
I know.
But they never intended to do anything with it. They didn't want to do anything, but now that they own a company that does rural fiber to the home, that may dramatically change.
Right.
So we'll see.
Go ahead.
Just so you know, Jeff, the, the town will be receiving a letter from the Economic Development Committee, basically asking or imploring us to continue to push this.
Right.
Item ahead for the benefit of business in town.
I know, that's, that's why we, we wanted AXIA to do it, and we have the plan, and then the left.
Okay.
Yeah, as I, as I can, I'll continue to push on this a little bit. I have the contact from Telus, who came to see me, it's been a little while, but he was the one that came to say that if you, as a town, if we wanted to build the infrastructure, they would be the backbone for it, they'd like to do that with their big fiber line, but they didn't intend to build out. So I'll try and see if I can find that person again, see what the plans are now that they own the AXIA fiber to the home company.
Thank you. So seven E three, councillor website.
Just wondering, you know, we talked about the town's website.
Yeah. So where is it at?
Yep.
You bet. So tomorrow morning, actually, at eight thirty, we have a, a meeting with most of the office, I think Bart's coming in, and we're talking about, from everybody's role, what's the functionality they'd like to see if we had carte blanche to do whatever we could on a website. And so that's at eight thirty tomorrow morning, where we're kind of whiteboarding everything that we would like to see for functionality, and we're going to put that in an RFP document and put it out for bids.
Awesome, thank you.
So we've kind of got a bit of a shell of it, but we just want to get some more details.
Okay.
All right. Last but not least, your letter, councillor, thank you for writing it.
No problem.
We're going to tweak a little bit to make it.
Pretty tweaked?
You have the, you have the honorable.
I'll fix that tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I'm picky, I know.
I think I'd like to tweak my own letter, if that's okay, Mayor.
You want to tweak?
Yes. Second paragraph, last word there, where it says number, let's just put total instead, so we're not saying number twice in the same sentence.
Okay.
And then, uh, there needs to be a space on the second page between the two paragraphs.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, uh, in the last paragraph, you might need to ask Shem how to address those officials, maybe she needs to be called honorable too, I don't know.
No, she's the Assistant Deputy Minister.
So, as they call misses, as they call miss, or, there is a way, he knows, maybe.
I think.
Yeah, okay, I don't know.
Thanks, miss.
I know, so, but, thank you so much. All right, so.
Was there someone else you wanted to send to as well, it was Rick MacIver?
Yes.
Minister of Transportation, so everything you have here, we'll just change the letter.
If it's not a CC, but actually change the.
Yeah, change it all to a second letter, signed by the mayor, to Minister MacIver for Transportation.
Okay. All right, so under seven E.
Mayor, do you have a resolution to send that letter?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can, can, do you want to do that?
Make a motion to send a letter that's before council to Minister Tanya Furr from Economic Development, Trade and Tourism, and to Minister Rick MacIver of Alberta Transportation.
Okay. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Councillor, I want to really recognize the amazing amount of work you had to do on your trip to Edmonton, good grief, that was an early, early start.
Happy to do it.
It's interesting, we managed to get more traction with this new ministry than what we had had in the past four years.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor, as a sidebar comment, the local Chamber of Commerce has approached both the Alberta and Canadian Chamber of Commerce, and they're working on getting resolutions for the Alberta Chamber, who will then take it to the Canadian Chamber to work on this trade corridor.
Good.
So, kudos, kudos to the Chamber of Commerce for taking this on as well.
Which is part of their role, which is good, I'm glad they're starting to realize that they have a big role there.
Councillor Southall was concerned that we never got a, a response back, a, a letter of support in, in our proposal to work on the trade quarter thing. I'm just wondering, is it, is it a good thing to send him back a second letter and ask him if they'd actually got the letter, and we're wanting to know if they could, Town of Fort MacLeod, we didn't get anything back from them.
That's too bad, we saw them today.
It'd be nice if we could get the response back from them.
We're just there, we, we talked to them.
I tried to talk with Mayor Fader at the meeting the other night, he was so, well, he was late getting there, and then he was busy, I never got a chance to growl him.
Maybe, Jeff, maybe, could you maybe send him a?
So Sue and I know each other pretty well, I can just give her a quick phone call and just see if there was a political reason or it just got, forgot, it's no problem.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under item nine, question eight, well, the reports, what's?
Yeah, okay, yeah, item nine, I'm sorry.
All right, councillor, go ahead.
Uh, just wondering.
Shem is not there.
Jeff, can you give us a little bit of an update on the coat of arms, or should we wait for Shem?
Yeah, actually, you know what, I, I know there's been some recent stuff happen, I've seen some mail come through, but I, I don't know exactly, councillor, I'd prefer if Shem could answer that, he would know.
Yeah, when he gets back.
Yeah.
I'd just like to have an update on where we're sitting with it, and whether the Blood Tribe has accepted.
Yeah, I, I think it went to, I remember some pretty official stuff coming back here recently, so I, I think we're okay there, but he'd be better to speak to it, I can't recall. He just went to grab some food, I should be back any minute.
Okay, councillors, let's move on, and we have correspondence, and then we can take a break, and then we will go in, close session. Okay? So correspondence, you have a notice of the AGM for the Old Man Watershed Council. Is anyone so excited to go there?
Did I attend that last year for you?
You might have.
It was held in the restaurant.
Oh, yes, that's right. Do you want to go?
Yeah, I, I think, I think I went to that.
Are you interested to go, councillor? It's on June twenty seven, I can't go to twenty seven, doesn't work for me. I always have it on a Thursday, and it doesn't work.
I could go to it.
Could you?
What do you want me to respond?
Uh, just let Jeff know.
Are we, are we donating anything to the watershed right now?
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
Then we should have somebody there.
So, Jeff, councillor Bangle is going to go to the Old Man Watershed.
If you'd just let me know the particular, Jeff?
We want lots of water.
It's at the end, Max, one to five.
Yeah, in the ballroom.
On June twenty seven, you probably were there last time.
Can I ask a question, because we're talking about water, the watershed, I'm going to direct this to Jeff, regarding our work in the creek here, that we, we can go ahead with some of the remediation, that, with the money that we have left, or?
Where are we at with that? So you're talking, yeah, okay. So we've been well-paid for phase one, we're good, we are, we have our applications into DFO and Alberta Environment for phase two, to see if we can get into the river this fall. If we don't get the approvals back, I've asked for an extension until March twenty twenty, and they've granted that, and they may let us do the work in the early spring, and they've got about one point three million for us to do that work, so.
Okay.
That's where we're at right now.
And so that is quite a, a large sum of money, but we will need it, it's, it's quite a complex amount of work to put all that stone against.
It's just so regulated, you got to have people standing watching every single block and rock and everything that goes in, so.
Go ahead.
Going from where to where in this?
So it's, if you, the big horseshoe on Hole eighteen, we did all that last year, and then there's a bit of a gap, and then there's a little bit in the corner, so it's going to fill that gap. So it's going to fill that gap because the, after that was done, that was the original approval, is they would only let us do those specific locations, even though we petitioned for the whole thing. And after the fact, they said, you know what, you're probably just going to wash out the second thing if you don't make it all contiguous.
Yeah.
So we're going to close the gap. And then the next section is down, going south further at the campground. So where the work was done at the campground, they approved us going further down, or upstream as it would be from there.
Coming towards Remington?
Towards the, the... Yeah, so it's upstream of Remington quite a ways. So probably between the campground and the reunion centre, in that area.
I have one other...
Okay, go ahead, councillor.
Where are we at with the Beaver Dam's down here? Are they getting washed out or?
I don't know.
Do we know what's going on?
They have been washed out.
Yeah, I think they mostly got washed out.
I mean, the water was so high a couple of weeks ago and last week, so whatever happened happened. Okay. So remember, we just had one question?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't.
But Jeff, along with councillor Barnes' question on the creek remediation, where[1723.87]